Okay, like to call the August 1st meeting of the planning commission to order. It's driving here on some beautiful evening and thought I might be here all by myself because who else would be here on such a beautiful evening? So I'm grateful and appreciative and admire everyone's commitment that you care about the town, care about the town plan. And we, on behalf of the planning commission, really appreciate your time joining us this evening. One thing we like to remind ourselves is that all of us are here because we care. But there are a lot of people who care about a lot of the issues that we're going to talk about who can't be here. And so we have been making a concerted effort to reach out to those people as much as possible and just hold them and their interests and their concerns as we are listening and talking among ourselves this evening. So just to go over the agenda, we'll have a brief time for public comment, approve the minutes, and then the bulk of the meeting is feedback from the various town committees on the first draft of the town plan. And we have an order set up here. We have allocated the time to be about five to 10 minutes per committee. And we want to hear from everyone, and so we are going to really manage the time. Then we will have a second opportunity for public comments specifically related to the discussion that we have just had. We asked that you refrain from talking about things not on the agenda because again, people aren't here based on the agenda. It's not fair to talk about things not on the agenda. Then we'll hear from Linda, the planner. Other business wrap up and planning for our next meeting. Executive session needed when I'm adjourned. And we really will adjourn at 9:00 PM. Does anybody need any changes or adjustments to the agenda? Okay, here we go. I will just introduce, so this is the planning commission and also David White is the consultant that from Sterling Mountain Planning and Community Design, who has been engaged with the town for about eight months, almost a year, working with us on a variety of things, but most, the bulk of his time has been spent working with the planning commission, leading us and guiding us and writing the first draft of the town plan. So he's here as we are all here to listen and process and compile as much as we can and learn as much as we can from the discussion tonight. Okay, so the next is public comment and we will use, if you're on the Zoom, the raise hand feature and if you're in the room, the raise hand feature. So maybe have a public comment. Chuck, please come forward when you have a comment and use the microphone.
And say your name.
And say your names. And also we, our secretary isn't here tonight, so we're going to be taking our own notes. So we have notes and we provide them in writing.
Sure, I'm gonna do that.
Okay. You have about three minutes.
So I am, a few minutes is just never enough, but I'll do my best, which is why I wrote it down so I can get through it. So these comments are my own. S J is representing the housing committee. She's going to speak later and I agree with everything she's, I know what she's going to say and I agree with everything she's going to say. This is, I hope, different. I'm hoping that you'll include the idea of housing clusters and panwarts on the rural areas of the plan. This is our true historical settlement pattern. In the 1850s, there were 1,800 people in Jericho, 36% of the current population. But there were only 30 structures in Jericho Center, including businesses. There were only 60 structures in Jericho Village, including businesses, and very few people lived in Riverside. Our settlement pattern was clusters of houses all over town. There were nine schools in Jericho. Jericho Center, Jericho Village, but there was school in Nashville, there was a school at the bottom of Barbara Farm. There was a school out on Lee River. There was a school on the South End towards Richmond. We were spread out. There were clusters all over the place. And I believe we can continue this pattern as opposed to the sprawl that we have been preferring in the past. But we can continue the actual historical pattern of clusters with P O Ds by reducing the land requirement. You know, you don't need 100 acres to build 10 acres, 10 houses. We could put 25 houses under 1,000 square feet on 10 acres, a little hamlet, small enough and cheap enough for people to be able to innovate. There's nine luxury houses going up on Morgan Road. The septic area for those nine houses is 5,000 square feet and eighth of an acre. So it simply isn't true that, I mean, it is possible to build clusters of thousands. The next thing is that the current draft assumes that single-family homes is the ideal and representative of our character. I appreciate that you're going to change the photographs. I do think that was a reveal. But the draft also assures people that infill will be slow and gentle and hardly noticed. You know, no, infill is core to our plan. It's coming. It's going to be more people and you're going to notice it. We're not going to hide these homes. We're not going to hide these people. We have restricted these people who are living there and we're certainly not going to hide them with smaller infill housing. We've never assured people that they won't notice houses for rich people. The draft says multifamily housing needs to look like single-family housing. Why is that? Does our character require that multifamily housing needs to be disguised? Are these the instructions that G R B is going to get? Are they going to be rejecting housing, multifamily housing that doesn't look like single-family homes? I think the plan needs to say that multifamily housing is coming. It's the best way to meet housing and climate goals. We need to say that upfront. The plan should be trumpeting multifamily housing as good for the climate and a new ideal for Jericho. That people are going to see multifamily housing and we're not going to say it has to be disguised as looking like single-family homes. We're done restricting people by income and we're not going to hide them. I hope that you leave a next one, I hope you leave a note in the plan to consider adding to the village life at West Bolton. West Bolton is denser and has more people than either Jericho Center or Riverside. It's the designated area of residential growth for all of Bolton. They are reducing lot sizes. It's going to be an area of growth. The section of Jericho next to West Bolton should be considered for a growth area. I know it's too much to consider right now on the fly, but you could indicate the intention to evaluate that possibility just as you're doing on the South End near Richmond. Finally, the town plan launches the drafting of regulations that have the power of law. This assumes power has been used, this, this power has been used in the past to further the self-interest of people in power. The past town plans have aligned town character, environmental concern, agricultural aesthetics and uniformity into a narrative of self-interest that irrespective of the facts, justifies large, single-family homes on large lots as the ideal. Big houses on big lots and values which oppose neighbors that don't live in big houses on big lots is the problem. Not an ideal and it shouldn't be our character. The plan needs to say that a little bit louder and a little bit more upfront. We didn't get where we are by accident. It was intentional. And we can, it's time to really say out loud, we're reversing that intention. You're going to notice it and we're not going to hide it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? And just as a reminder, we will have time for public comment again later in the meeting after our discussion tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Anybody on the Zoom? Okay. Uh, the next order of business is to approve our minutes of July 18th. Do I have a motion to approve minutes?
I'm moving.
Sabina. Motion to approve the second. Sarah, thank you. All those, oh no, do they have any edits or clarifications or changes or revisions or any corrections? On the minutes? No, okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone a o? Heidi?
Muted still.
Can you give us an aye? Or I'll assume you're.
Or she could type it into the.
Okay, I will assume an aye unless we hear otherwise. And Wendy?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, the next topic is to discuss the town plan and the first committee is the Jericho Community Development Board. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Can you come forward please to the microphone and introduce yourself? And thank you very much for your time and offering your feedback.
Sure, man. Hi, I'm Susan.
Before you start, just for the record, for our recording, Heidi's abstaining because she was absent.
Okay.
For the minutes.
Okay.
I'm Susan Harret and I am here on behalf of the Jericho Community Development Corporation and we have discussed the draft plan at our last meeting and my comments reflect the general remarks and position of the J C D C and in addition, I think are slated to reflect my own personal preferences too, since I'm the one sitting here. So, um, I do want to say that the J C D C was pleased with the plan in its current form, recognizing that it is an initial product. We think that it reflects the need for development, balancing development against a lot of community needs, recognizing climate change issues and things of that sort. I didn't read the plan as necessarily allowing single-family houses above all other dwell, dwelling types. Perhaps I need to read it again, but I think that certainly there, there's room for emphasis in a variety of places and I'm sure you're going to take into account everything you hear and will, I hope, have an opportunity down the road to comment as further revisions are in circulation. I did want to mention on page three of your product, you say, sort of in the middle of the page, except in only a few instances, a local government doesn't actually build the new houses or start new businesses. And I think that's a truism, but I did want to direct everyone to the J C D C Articles of Incorporation because the language there. I think, um, who knows what I did with my notes? The, the Articles of Incorporation give the J C D C the authority to foster, encourage and assist in the development, among other things, assets and projects. So there is a contemplation and I think people around the table know that the J C D C along with the town, we were involved in the purchase of the two railroad circle property. So you might want to think about the reframing of that sentence because in fact it is consistent with town business that on occasion there is the creation of a building and whatnot. So I wanted to highlight that. And I thought on page 25 and throughout, when you're talking about creating compact, diverse and affordable housing, I don't think you use the word accessible. And I think we need to think about accessibility, accessibility relative both to those who may have problems relative to their movements. And maybe accessibility could be read or interpreted to, referred to, access to public transportation or whatever, but I think the concept of accessibility perhaps could be enhanced. There are a lot of references to new housing and I don't know if there is an intentional omission of housing stock that exists that could be rehabbed. So I thought maybe you could be more specific in that regard. There was a comment for the J C D C and I want to make sure I bring this to your attention. It's on page 30 and it references, it's one of the bullets at the bottom in the section, this includes things like, and this bullet reads, density limits need to be eliminated as they are not an accurate reflection, et cetera. And so someone attending our meeting asked what that meant. Do you mean adjusted or do you mean eliminated? And what density limits are we talking about? So I just, I suggest that there be some further explanation there. Uh, okay. In this document, there are references to churches. And I think you should strike the word church and insert places of worship. And maybe you've.
Yes, you got it.
Good. Okay. And I also wanted to mention that I don't think there was any reference and maybe this doesn't belong here, but a reference to public art. I think art could convey messages either because you have people of different complexions. You have, you celebrate our, you know, the natural beauty. It could be a way of people just gathering in a place where there's art, but I, I just very much enjoy seeing art in various forms and I'm not an artist and I leave it up to you folks to figure out how art can be incorporated, but I think it would be, it would enhance our, our jelly experience. So the very last thing I wanted to say was there was a reference and I think it was more of a metaphor, a picture of what it's like when people move around a community and they see their neighbors and people are sitting on stoops. There was a reference to stoop, which let's see if I can think of where that was. Page 38, I think. And I think that's a very nice image, but I just have a concern because the, the plan as written talks a lot about bringing, allowing people to stay in the community, seniors, and also the other end of the spectrum, young families and whatnot, which I think is great. But as I understand it, the zoning regs seem to want to require or there's this picture of the house with the steps, the stoop. And I think that runs, you run into problems with the ADA. It doesn't recognize again that accessibility model. So leave stoop in on page 30, but I just want to, um, I don't know, emphasize a bit that we need the accessibility. We need different styles of housing stock so that people can be comfortable and access their homes and, and businesses too.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Planning Commission, have any questions for you, Susan? David?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, Energy Task Force.
All right, thanks. And my apologies for not being there and I probably will have to leave a little bit early because the Blackberrys aren't picking themselves. I passed around the draft. Phil, Phil Newbeck, Secretary of the Jericho Energy Task Force. I asked, I sent it around to various task force members. I only got one response, which was somewhat biting. And perhaps it's best if I send that as an email. Would that be appropriate? Forward it to you guys?
Sure.
It, it elaborated a little bit on my general concern and I know we're not supposed to be talking about format. And I also realize that having been involved with the drafting of the two previous town plans, I'm a little bit wedded, I suppose, to the old format. And I worry a little bit that, I mean, this town plan has wonderful statements. We are most definitely cognizant of climate change. We are most definitely in favor of diversity. But I don't really see any way of getting there. I recognize the town plan is a vision and the meat of things are in the regs. But for instance, the previous town plan had something about when the double yellow line is painted on the roads, fog lines are also painted. And as a cyclist, I think that's an important thing. That's not in the document anywhere. Most, most of my energy comments really do have to do with transportation. And there is a lot of talk about bike paths, about interconnectedness. But there are an awful lot of people who ride on the road. And there's really nothing about that. There is nothing about making sure that, you know, maybe at the beginning of the season that the shoulders are swept. There is nothing about the fog lines. There's nothing about perhaps expanding the shoulder a little bit. Because it simply isn't possible to have bike paths going everywhere. So I would like to see as part of the transportation piece, which is part of the Energy Task Force area, that a little more attention be paid to that. Otherwise, again, as I said, the, the town plan says wonderful things. I just don't see how we get there. So thank you. Sorry to be a downer.
No, that's okay. Um, just maybe to respond to that, there's, there is a section, Getting It Done. And you're familiar, Phil, as, as am I, with the big implementation tasks spreadsheet. So that part has not yet really been filled out precisely because we wanted to make sure we had the goals and the priorities nailed down before we really generated lots of tasks that then were associated with content that maybe wasn't going to stay. So that.
So that will be added?
It will, I, it's not going to be added to the extent, it's not going to recreate that implementation task sheet, but it will be more robust than what you see right now in the draft where we will go through, so what I just wrote down from your comment was more specifics and more actionable items. And so that is kind of like a next layer to be better than a little bit more.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil, I'd also add that what you were, what you had a chance to look at is volume one of a two-volume set. Volume two is by and large the plan that you were familiar with. It has all of that detail in it. It's just less oriented towards policy and specific actions, but examples like sweeping and fog lines and things like that. I'm working to retain all of that as part of the narrative and in the second part of the volume. So that's all becomes part of the plan.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Phil? For the planning?
I have a question, Phil, about have we done enough to address sort of the energy efficiency of our municipal buildings and things like that as far as the, your committee is concerned?
Again, there were only two of us who looked at it and I confess that I was more concerned with some of the, the broader things than the specifics about the municipal building. I'd probably have to go back to that and my apologies for not having given that quite as much attention.
Thanks. Any other questions for Phil? Okay.
I would just echo and say I thanks Phil for bringing up the importance of fog lines on roads for bicyclists. Because we talk about transportation cycling all the time and we rarely talk about it in terms of people who ride on roads where cars are. And that's most riders out there.
Yes.
The truth is, we're not. Yeah, basically.
Okay, moving on to the Affordable Housing Committee. We're going to do questions from the public. We're just going to get through all the committees first. S J?
Uh, may I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Can you all see that? I'm trying to double my time by providing oral comments and something that you can look at and read. I'm S J Dubey. I'm Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. I will try to get through this quickly, but I do want to acknowledge that we will be sending along a more detailed document next week that addresses some more specifics, but with only five to 10 minutes and giving you kind of a, a big overview. So overall impressions, I think for the most part, we, we were really happy to see that housing really is front and center along with climate change. I think that both of those priorities should be there. And a lot of the things that we have been talking about and considering were represented there. So residential infill, it was nice to see the housing target resolution front and center, permitting diverse housing like multi-unit and mixed use, infrastructure, increasing village and village center districts and finding other areas for dense housing, simplifying and streamlining land use regulations, increasing town government capacity to be able to do a lot of these things. I think that there were a couple of things that we felt could use some tweaking. One of them, and I'll talk about it more briefly in a minute, was, you know, I think that it does a fairly good job of setting up the challenges, but doesn't really nail home the impact of those challenges to then explain or justify that the goal and the priority of increasing families and economic diversity in town. Use of the word affordable is a little muddy here and there. I'll talk about that a bit more in detail. And really wanting to drive home the strategic growth that is guided by the natural resources overlay and water, wastewater mapping. Housing and climate are front and center for good reason and they should be informing each other to strategically kind of make these changes and just really kind of underscoring that, that we're not, we're not talking about growth at at the cost of protecting our natural resources, for example. Two things that I do want to take a second to mention that were missing were rentals, renting, rentals were mentioned once and in a table and manufactured homes. There were a couple of different places where various diverse housing options were listed out and manufactured homes isn't listed anywhere in the document. And both of those are, are critical pieces to creating opportunities for population growth and economic diversity. So in terms of driving home that a little bit of what Chuck alluded to earlier was that diverse housing types should be explicitly possible in all areas residential building is allowed. Guided, of course, by natural resource mapping and consistent with the priorities of the land use area. And I will acknowledge that throughout the document, that there are places that kind of allude to it. For example, I think there's reference to across the community, which maybe is the same as in all areas residential building is allowed. But it's, it's not quite as clear and explicit. Similarly, the land use tables suggest that diverse housing is should be in some of these other areas, but it doesn't, it's not as explicit as it is in maybe the mixed use and, and compact centers. And on the one hand, I understand why that is, but I think it's really important to be clear that diverse housing types, multifamily units do have a place in all places where residential building happens. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One of them being, you know, land use should always, land use priorities and conservation, natural resources should always be taken into account and, you know, used as part of a guide for an impact assessment. And there will be some instances where a small, compact, multi-unit housing is perhaps more appropriate and better suited to reduce scatter or sprawl and may have less of an impact in an area. And that area might be in what we think of as rural and ag. And we should, we should be front and center about that. And then also not allowing the kinds of housing that is accessible to median and below median income households is inconsistent with both our Declaration of Inclusion and our Housing Target Resolution. With the term affordable, I think everyone in the, in the room and on this call knows that affordable has lots of different meanings, lots of different connotations. The definition that's given in the document of below 80% AMI. Um, the definition that's given in the document of below eighty percent AMI or area median income um, is inconsistent with what, how we define affordable in our land use regs, which is inconsistent with how, uh, affordable is defined in Vermont statutes and in our Jericho housing resolution. Um, so staying away from the standalone term affordable, uh, and really instead just using affordable to low and middle income households when we specifically mean that. Um, and then when we're talking more broadly, using words like housing choice, variety, diversity when speaking more broadly. And I do want to draw attention to, to a specific area. I think it's page twenty-seven or twenty-eight where, um, the way that it's written, it sounds like we are prioritizing only middle income housing, only households making between eighty percent to a hundred twenty percent AMI. Um, and defining priorities, uh, to the disadvantage of lower income persons really is inconsistent with both the resolution and our inclusivity statement. Um, choice includes creating housing options for low income as well as missing, uh, middle income families. So, um, in, I just want to kind of summarize. I understand that chapter, uh, that chapters in volume one are really going to be cut to their bare bones. Um, and so I just wanted to close with a pitch for what we would like to see kept in volume one. And that is the commitment statement, um, a brief description of the challenge and the goal, which is the housing resolution and then the next steps. Um, I know that we were asked not to wordsmith, but, um, the, uh, the commitment, uh, that first big green block of text, I think is, is really a critical part of the chapter. Um, it may be the only thing that people read. Um, and it really needs to clearly list the priorities rather than just being a kind of vision statement, which is I think what's currently in the draft. Um, and so we've offered, um, this text as replacement, um, that starts with a vision statement, um, that really states that we want to create conditions necessary for growing and diversifying our population by offering housing choices for all. Um, and then go through a list of, um, a list of ways that, uh, the kind of permission structure that we want to lay out to allow that to happen. Um, a lot of that is stuff that, that is included in the document, but I think similar to other chapters in the plan, um, it would be nice and is appropriate to see them laid out here. We've also included, um, goal dates. Um, so land use regulations that support compact, uh, the creation of compact and diverse housing that's affordable to low and middle income households in all of Jericho, um, appropriate to the land use area priorities by June twenty twenty-four. We'd love to see some new land use regulations in place using natural resource and, uh, mapping to inform land use rather than relying on historic zoning um, to identify areas appropriate for new housing. Our understanding is that the, the mapping and overlay resources will be available by, uh, November, so we'd love to start using them to inform decisions. Um, ensuring, uh, regs and procedures, um, are efficient are really going to be critical to allowing for the rate of construction that we've listed as a goal in our housing, uh, resolution. Um, and we'd love to see those procedures, um, looked at by, uh, twenty twenty-four. Investing in community infrastructure. And here we've noted, um, the first community wastewater project uh, by twenty twenty-eight and we, we were careful to say first because, uh, one community wastewater project, uh, isn't going to meet all the infrastructure demands that I think we need to be thinking about. Um, and increasing municipal capacity in, in whatever fashion seems appropriate, um, that we can, uh, discuss and vote on by twenty twenty-four town meeting. And then I will briefly go through these. A lot of this is already in, uh, the chapter as it stands now. Um, the supporting text and some of the supporting data and examples for each of these arguments is there and I, I wouldn't um, advocate for cutting it. I think it's, it's brief and to the point. Um, but just to be clear that the housing challenges really are our slow housing supply growth, our low housing turnover, our lack of variety in housing types, out of reach prices and the dwindling number of households with children. The result of years of that has been an, uh, change in the town's demographics and thus our identity. We have shifted to a, a demographic that is much older and much wealthier, um, than we were a couple decades ago. And, uh, that's hurting, um, it's hurting our town in a lot of different ways. Um, and the goal again really addresses those challenges, um, and they're outlined in the resolution. Increasing the rate of new dwellings, encouraging how, a variety of housing types, um, and targeting that, um, we've created, uh, the environment such that fifty percent of new dwellings can be, uh, affordable to middle and low income households. And, uh, the how do we get there? I think we've talked about and, and for the sake of time, I'll, I'll end here. Um, but to just note that building more homes and allowing a range of housing types will really help curb prices overall and make sure homes of all shapes and sizes are available for people of all income levels and life stages. So hopefully we'll have a document to you that's, uh, more specific, especially as things get moved from volume one into volume two. Um, by mid-week, next week, I suppose. But I, I really appreciate your time and the invitation to come in and, uh, provide feedback. I know the amount of work and effort and thought, um, that has gone into this.
Okay, thank you SJ. Uh, any, uh, comments or questions for SJ? Clarification?
Um, yeah, so in, where you have the impact statement and you, I don't know, SJ, while you already took your sound down, so it's not?
I just interrupt you for one second. Can everybody on the phone, please mute your phone? We suddenly have a lot of feedback. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
Um, when you're talking about impact, you just said that the, the demographics has changed. I'm not sure that that impact statement is going to motivate people in any direction. And I think we've discussed a lot what the real impact is of an aging population and having less, lower school enrollment and how it affects our property taxes. So I know we brought that up in the past. I don't know how to illustrate that within the town plan, but I do think it's a really important connection we need to continue to make for people. That the reality of an aging population translates to higher property taxes for everyone. And that's, again, I'm not, I'm not sure how people are making that connection or how we can spell it out for people better. Uh, what lies ahead is that you don't change worse.
You see the impact statement that she suggested could be broadened?
Oh, I'm not suggesting that impact statement. It's, it's, it was a brief. But you're, you're articulating. You're articulating exactly what we felt like was missing and needed, needs to be, uh, punched up.
Yeah, agreed. So strong agreeing then with that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions for SJ? You guys are doing great. This is really very helpful. Heidi?
Thank you. Yes, sorry. Finding all my buttons is challenging. Um, and I hope you can hear me well enough.
Yes.
I really appreciate what you said SJ and because I am not as educated as you are on, there was a nuance there that I thought you were saying that I might want to make sure I understand about having housing determined not by zoning but by natural resource. Something like, I feel like there was something really packed in that statement that went over my head. And so I can do a follow-on separately unless team planning commission, uh, we need some decoding uh, so that everybody else can be informed. Cause that seems like a pretty significant shift that is being offered. But that might be just because I am not as educated.
No, it's a good clarifying point. Obviously zoning is used in that way. Um, and we're saying instead of, instead of relying on historical zoning because it's always been this way, let's instead use science um, and our priorities to make a decision about what zoning makes sense where and what kind of housing makes sense where. Instead of the, well, it's always been this way. Uh, that argument, um, doesn't, doesn't serve either of those two priorities of climate and, uh, housing.
Thank you for that clarification because for me it, it then leads to this premise that we are following sort of the natural settlement patterns, which I think does remain in the draft that it is there right now. And, and so I'm hearing that you're saying like, hmm, let's take a pause and just take a look at whether that is really what we want to be offering and if that's in line. And so thank you. Um, and so if I could, uh, fellow members of the planning commission also just want to throw in there. This question about the natural resources really made me think in the context of our, we've seen our neighbors in terms of flooding. And while we are leading with statements of caring about climate change, I honestly have been paused in thinking about the extent to which we are thinking very specifically about what those actual impacts are to our community and the extent to which we have named that. And so as we think about where is housing? Where is infrastructure? Are we, and we, we have a whole chapter about resilience. But this question about thinking about housing in the context of our natural systems as opposed to our historic development feels very ripe for me, given what we've seen our neighbors go through with this recent flooding. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to share that.
Okay, thanks Heidi. Good to move on. Okay. Conservation Commission, I assume that's Tom Farivo. Hi Tom. Floor is yours.
Good evening folks. Uh, hopefully you can hear me well enough.
Yes.
Really appreciate the opportunity to dissect this iteration of the draft with, uh, members of the other committees as, as well as, uh, you folks on the commission. I sent the wordsmithing portion of our commentary to, uh, Linda and Susan only just in the last few minutes. So I'll refrain from hashing over those, uh, here in public. I do want to, uh, recognize the fact that due to travel schedules and work uh, requirements, I receive very little in the way of feedback from our other members. So a lot of what I'm saying tonight reflects a distillation of what I've uh, come to understand from my fellow conservation committee, uh, colleagues. As a group, we look forward to reviewing some of the additional graphics that have been suggested on page twenty-two of the stewarding resilient uh, uh, community. Um, it's also exciting to have an opportunity to add new data to our dynamic inventory of forest blocks and how habitats are connected. And basically, I, I've got to cover for my colleagues that we've really spent most of our free time as a committee, uh, trying to uh, go through the nuts and bolts of how to make the uh, natural resource inventory, a more up-to-date document. And to that effect, we've got a most excellent outside consultant in the Arrowood Environmental, uh, Group. Um, and as alluded to earlier this evening, uh, that information should be available for the public in relatively short order, but it's just not totally ready for, uh, prime time at this point. As the, as far as the future land use plan is concerned, I, I think it's a reasonable approach, uh, toward the planning commission, uh, creating a forward vision for Jericho using four interconnected areas. I do have some concern for how we balance the implicit references to how natural resource components are sustained in Jericho with the planning commission's need to shorten the document, make it more concise. Uh, with what appears to be, uh, a need to forego explicit statements of needs, concerns and goals. Now David, I just heard you say a lot of that is going to appear in, in volume two. Uh, and so I guess we'll look forward to making sure that as, as the iterations continue in the next few weeks. Uh, and that our CC membership has more chance to actually uh, look closer at things that, uh, any nuances that have been uh, excised for brevity's sake are, are not lost in the new final version. I do have a couple of general comments, uh, and then I'll give the floor back. Tell me that the word predictable is a typographical error because I've tried to parse that in several dictionaries and it appears three times in the resiliency chapter. And all it does is muddle my understanding of what the objective is. I think the word predictable is the appropriate one. Uh, moving on. It's one thing to allude to the fact that Jericho is doing a good job with its natural resource planning by saying that it's great. We could see coyotes and bear and deer. And, and that's, uh, a real measure of, of the, the town's uh, care for the environment and creation or whatever you want to call it. But there are some things that are ongoing that are a concern. Um, and I hope that the attention to mapping forest blocks and understanding where development is appropriate continues to be at, at the forefront of the planning commission's uh, efforts at rewriting regulations. You know, town of Jericho is not alone in having lost a overall density of insect life. Um, bird life as well because of the interconnectedness of those two trophic levels. So it, it's great that we could see top-level carnivores and herbivores uh, on the landscape, but we really do have to make sure that some of the changes to, um, increasing housing stock aren't going to be at, for the sake of bankrupting some of the other biological components and make a functioning ecosystem. Uh, next comment. I'm comfortable with the use of changing between uh, first-person plural and third-person objective, uh, points of view in, in the, in the, um, final version. I think it, it makes it a more user-friendly or reader-friendly document. Um, I do have one objection that I want to be explicit about, and it's on page seven. When, uh, there's a reference to, um, decisions in town planning and subdivision regulations that uh, lead to the town of Jericho suffering the consequences. I really object to that statement because in my mind, and I've alluded to this, as almost thirty years plus on the Conservation Commission. Rerites of the town plan have always more or less focused on supporting low-density residential development. But we've also maintained healthy watersheds, working landscapes, critical wildlife habitat. And provided outdoor recreational opportunities for all. Those are all. Admirable features of the decision-making that has gone before in our town plans. To use the term suffering the consequences suggests a reference to those. Four points as being akin to criminal activity. You know? Why? Why does it have to be worded that way? And I've suggested an edit. That I hope the commission will consider because it, it sets a better tone than. Alluding to the fact that protecting natural resources is more of an elitist activity. With little regard for the needs of a diverse set of. Peoples of various. Ethnic backgrounds as well as socioeconomic. Background, so. That's my diatribe and invective as an individual, not as a chair of a town committee. Do I have one other here?
You have just a couple more minutes, Tom.
I think I'll stop there. Then I appreciate the time you've given.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Hey, any. Clarifications, questions from David or the planning commission? Okay, good reminders.
Thank you. My name is Steve Schwartz. I'm the Chair of the Jericho Trails Committee. With us, we have Jessica Diane, and I will ask Jessica to chime in. When or if she feels necessary. While I will first admit that I have not had a chance to go through the entire town plan, there's a lot to read there. But I will make comments specific to trails in two ways. One in particular is trail systems that we have are. Isolated, yet sustainable. Meaning that they're there for all to enjoy, but the question is how many know that those trails exist? So we're currently making efforts to make sure that people do that through various maps that we're providing. And we'll also make available on, on the town websites. But the biggest concern, and I, as I said, I didn't get through the entire town plan, but the biggest concern. Of myself and the trails committee as we've gone through this year to year is the true connectivity. Of the various different parts of the town of Jericho. Granted, and we all know this, Jericho is extremely spread out. So you have the corners, the riverside area, and you have the center of which, as the old saying goes, you can't get there from here. Not without a car. So connectivity in the town plan is something that should be addressed. And made deliberate. As you go to various different other towns. And you notice that they have the nice asphalt recreation paths and or whatever that connect various different neighborhoods. It's achievable in the town of Jericho. But as we talk about it, it just, I'm going to use the term, kind of slips through our fingers. So if that is stressed in the town plan, I'm going to go back and look for it. We as a committee have not had the chance to discuss the town plan. Our meeting, upcoming meeting is, happens to be Monday, so we haven't had a chance to talk about. The town plan as written, but it'll certainly be a part of that agenda. But we need to dissect that and make sure that we understand how the town of Jericho as a plan. Is going to deliberately start connecting various different areas, non-motorized. The current effort by Stan Tech as a consulting group and others is a great start. But as all things go, start is one thing and achieving the milestones and making sure we stick to those milestones. Is the complete other part of that. So, you know, I'll, I'll make this brief and I'll get off the stage, but I think we need to make sure the town plan. Addresses a more concerted effort for connectivity. I, you know, I live off, off of Packard Road and riding a bicycle down Packard Road is. Interesting in one way, but once you get through fifteen, then it's a whole other story. So without going through the town forest, I think, while, while going through the town forest, I can get to a lot of places. But other than that. It's a hopscotch. I mean, it's really tough to do. So I just want to make sure that the town plan in its finality addresses connectivity and how we're going to achieve that. Because as I said, I didn't go through the entire town plan, but I'm not sure it's in there. Can anybody comment on that? Is a connectivity piece in that town plan?
Connectivity is in a, it's kind of an essential part of any discussion of. Our networks of streets and paths and sidewalks and trails is that it is an interconnected network.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, we just, we have, we have, again, I'll use the term isolated. So we have isolated. Trails and we have isolated sidewalks, which kind of go to an endpoint and then you got to turn around and come back. So you, you can't really get from here to there, non-motorized, very easily.
Do you think the, whatever, the twenty sixteen transportation plan that we have, there's like a. Transportation master plan that is sometimes called the bike head plan. And that talks about connectivity and prioritizes connectivity. Do you think that that plan is sufficient or is not sufficient? To achieve the connectivity that you're envisioning?
I, 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 I can't tell you if it's sufficient or not sufficient because I just don't know that answer. But if all the pieces are that, there was a couple of things that were brought up by the various other committees. One is the, the number of houses that we'll build and the number of those houses at a fifty percent value is for affordable housing. So if you build those types of places. Wherever in Jericho, and they're once again isolated within themselves, then it doesn't. It, it, it does those people the favor of being able to have that housing available to them. But then if they want to go anywhere, they got to get in a car and go. So is, is what you said, you know, sustainable or is it? Is it, is it complete? In itself, maybe, but where's the timeline to get the rest of the work done? So I cannot have to go out on Packard Road, or if I go out on Packard Road, I'm on a trail on Packard Road that'll get me down there.
Right.
And it can get to all the other places.
The reason I'm asking is because the town plan. Has a certain level of detail that it can deliver, but then it references all these other plans that the town has done. And so. What I would like to know is, is should this town plan say? Let's make that twenty sixteen bike head plan happen, X, Y, Z. These are the, these are the top priorities in the next. Two, four, six years, or does the town plan need to say, yeah, that thing not going to work? Not the right plan, too incomplete, not focused enough about, enough about connectivity. We need a more robust plan. Does the town plan can't be the transportation plan?
No, it can't. But at a high level, we call it fifty thousand, fifty thousand point level. It should say that as we develop new housing units or new houses in various different cards. That there should be with the developers, a plan for connectivity within that development. And to other developments. I'll give a great example. Next to Mills Riverside Park, up on the hill, there's a plan for houses up there. But you go up the road, you come down the road, you go back on Route fifteen, and you go wherever you need to go by car. Whereas you, what should have been done is it said, if you're going to build those houses up there. Then you need to build a bicycle path that goes along Route fifteen that takes you up to, to Bronze Trace. And also connects to Underhill and Mills Riverside Park. Otherwise, it's just another isolated housing unit. So to answer your question, it should be detailed in the town plan. That as we continue to develop, that connectivity should be a. A firm point on how it's going to be achieved for non-motorized transportation. Jessica, I don't know if you've got.
Listen, may I? May I chime in for a moment?
Sure, a couple more minutes.
Um, the, the bike pit plan that you refer to. Is a wonderful plan, but it also deals mostly with bike paths and not so much with on-road facilities. Granted, I haven't looked at it in great detail in a while, but again, that, that's something that I'd like to stress. So, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Thank you.
Right. And on that point, on-road bicycling, where we just talked about Route fifteen itself, now we're at a state level. So we have to figure out how would you really do that safely to allow for people to get on Route fifteen? I'm just using that as an example, or even Lee River Road without having to worry about getting clipped by a car that's doing fifty miles an hour. Right? I mean, when I bike Route fifteen, I'm a road rider. I'm listening. And I'm trying to hear what's coming up behind you, but there's really nothing I can do about it, which, which is just listen and.
No place to go.
Right. I mean, I used to ride Route fifteen from Winewski to a six junction and. Trucks with large side view mirrors are just missing my head by, you know, a foot with that. So back to connectivity, you know, I think it's a real important part for the town plan. To be fervent about it and address how we're going to improve our connectivity.
I would suggest bringing on what Steve says, I, I agree with that. That there should be something in the town plan that says if you are building a new, putting in a new development greater than X number of housing. Units, you must provide. Bike head trend integration into the rest of the network of the town. So if you're going to put something up on the middle of Skunk Hollow Road. You can't just put it there. You have to put in some type of way to get from there to the rest of the town. And we should also, in our town plan, have. I like date certainties, that by X date, there will be a bike path between the three centers Jericho. Right? It will be built.
They're, they're working on it from corners to riverside, right? Stanton is doing a great job of moving that along. On trying to get to the centers, a whole different story.
But you can go along Plains Road and get up there and it's not too hard to do.
You can.
There are, there are options we can look at in those town planners. We should be incorporating those.
I just, I think it's really important for the, for, you know, for, for people that want to stay here and live here and move about. As well as anybody that wants to move into this neighborhood or this area. Say, oh, wow, that really looks great because I can go with my kids on Sunday and go down and get ice cream, get on the bike path or whatever. I think that's about it. Jessica, do you have any comments? If we think that is enough. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. So. Any planning commission people have any follow-ups and comments, discussions among ourselves? Before I open it up to public comment, is there anything in the chat we need to? Then what we will do is take the next maybe ten or fifteen minutes for public comment. On the specifics of the town plan, especially as it relates to what we just heard. And I think since we have like the different committees here and you all look at things from your frame of reference. It's, it will be very, I invite you also to ask questions or confirm things that you've heard from other committees. Because that, that will help us understand where's their consensus and synergy and where is there friction that potentially needs to be resolved. And I'll ask you again, if you wouldn't mind to use the raise hand feature. Except Heidi and Wendy, you guys can just chime in whenever you need to and raise your hand. Did you have a comment?
I would like to make.
Okay, please come forward. And state your name for the recording.
Yes, I'm Bill Butler, and I wanted to say, uh, thank you for writing such a readable document. For starters.
That was David, so you can thank him.
Well, anyway, it was readable and I enjoyed it. It just never happened before. So one thing I really want to reiterate what Heidi Klein said. I think that we, or I, I believe that I'm going to do. We've been protecting our watershed, our, our floodplains, our wetlands for forty years. And been really, really insistent upon, upon it as we've gone through these years. And I believe. That's why we haven't suffered so dramatic problems in the, in the. Previous flooding events. And we've been careful. I'd like to keep that. Because we have a housing problem, we're going to have more flooding. And so I'm hoping that. We really do pay attention to all the floodplains and try to, not try, we must conserve them. That's why we're still okay. And anything that we do, and I'm totally in favor of the goals of, of adding housing into the. Into, into this, this concept or the town plan and emphasizing, but. The runoff from development is a lot of the problem that we're seeing. We saw in Jericho, not Jericho, Richmond the other day, and they're not being careful. That's, I want us to. Realize that why we are safe is because of the work we did with floodplains and wetlands. And let's keep that up. Uh, the other thing is I, I would like ADA compliant design throughout all the new housing. Because a lot of the people that would be looking for these smaller homes are like me, who have a larger house. And would like to move into a smaller house and then we have both things. And the other thing is. Please don't delay in the evaluation of the Riverside Zone. We have a project that we'd like to do there. We don't want to fight the zoning. And I, I could see something quite. Heartening to me is that you were going to allow floodings in conceptual, you know. So, and we want to make a building with rooftop gardens. So that's going to be good, but please attend to that as soon as you can.
Like, right in the queue as soon as we get this done.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you very, I think very rich.
Thank you very much.
I certainly want to thank you all for your hard work. I'm looking forward as I enter the last quartile of my hundred years. To see Jericho dramatically improved. I think I've heard Susan and several others talk, think outside the box, something new, something different. I would like to just say quickly, Vermont's not doing a good job. And looking to the central core government in Vermont is where you can find one of the principal causes of the adverse flooding that's occurred. And the damage that was done in three days with Irene is greater than all the development that's been done since I've been living here, which is forty-five years. So when you allow these things to happen, because we don't stop water where it falls. Capture it, absorb it, evaporate it, it builds heads. And the principal problems are mostly from government development. I've been doing private development in Vermont for almost fifty years. No water leaves our development. Even close to the original amounts that fell on it before we did the development. Development is very well supervised, but government is not. Jericho is one of the worst husbands of taking care of clean water, the way they manage their roads. And you can just take a look at. And you can just take a look at Silly Hill and all the stuff that they've been doing. All of our dirt roads, the water is running down the dirt roads because we don't know how to drive a shovel, we don't know how to use a rake, and we can't get out of the massive machines, and the machines are the wrong machines. So you create corridors because all the gravel is piled up on the side of the road. Bottom of Bolger Hill Road, it's now got day lilies, it's about two and a half feet. So all the roads, and the only thing that I vary with my friend Dylan, we were very fortunate in the last storm because we didn't get as much rain as everybody else did. But Jericho's roads are not in good shape. You look at the shoulders, they're hazardous, seriously hazardous to bikers. They're hazardous to pedestrians. So here we go. Life quality, that's the principal purpose of the town plan is life quality, safety for children, quiet, traffic safety, noise, sharing resources. Uh, just think of all the yellow buses sitting over there that fly around town predominantly empty because the parking lot is full of SUVs. And yet we can't pick up an elderly person. We don't have any handicapped accessible buses traveling around as they're driving all over the road. So just think of global warming, all those buses don't help any of the senior citizens that we want to be able to get in and out of the handicap pass. So Mr. Lacy's been really good pressuring things. If we actually go to all of the electrical stuff that we're talking about going to and creating the dependency on charging electric vehicles, particularly during peak hours, the grid will melt. And because of global warming or whatever the thing is increasing, the temperatures, air conditioning to try to mitigate the adverse effects of global warming, it puts more demands on the electrical system. There's two simple words predominant, dominant in the town plan should be there and it's not. Geothermal. Fifty-five degree water will cool our houses a hell of a lot better and cheaper than electrical compressors. And I can strip twenty degrees out of fifty-five degree water in the winter time and it's a heck of a lot better for the environment than combustible energy. This building should be geothermal. The school should be geothermal, but it's capital intensive, it's hard to do and it, it needs, I'm sorry.
We're saying yes.
Do you agree with me about something? Okay, it's capital intensive, but it needs to be stated that it does not need zoning and planning to be created. Okay? And that the town is going to create on its rights of way infrastructure for the interconnectivity, because if you're gonna put geothermal in, you can also put fiber optic in, because all of our telephone poles are probably the ugliest thing in the whole town. They also have no resilience to, to, uh, deteriorating weather. Trees, everybody wants trees. Well, you gotta cut the trees down because they're gonna fall on the wires. In the sixties, I put more utilities in the ground than Jericho has in the ground by myself. You dig and you put it in the ground, capital intensive. Our town plan should save all our utilities by a date certain, the wires are down. The pipe is in the ground. And on top of where the pipe is, is a sidewalk. Et cetera, et cetera. Those are our utilities that are now all owned by Canadians who are laughing at the imprudence and the poor management and the failed governance of the state of Vermont. Just think about it, Green Mountain Tower, Vermont Gas, Central Vermont is all owned by Canadians. The word resiliency. Our town is not resilient. We don't have backup. And yet, more and more people are working from home.
What do you mean backup? You mean backup like for the barn part volunteers?
Absolutely everything. The town, the state of Vermont.
So what do you mean by backup?
You need to, uh, in effect, have redundancy, you need to have multiple accesses. For example, you have a large development on South Main Street. It comes to a dead end. There's not two alternative ways in.
Right.
So if you don't have two, two alternative ways in, the water takes out the road, the tree falls over the road, whatever it is that happens. If somebody is not planning for redundancy, backup and coordination, it doesn't happen. So again, I want to emphasize life quality and safety are really important and that's what our town plan should be loud and clear, aggressive. Housing, the whole concept of the village center is completely obsolete in the town of Jericho. The village centers are predominantly not developable. The folks who live there do not want you doing a lot of infill. They've already got fire safety problems. They already have pollution in their wells. They already have too much noise. They don't have any fire protection. Their water quality is suffering and their wastewater is not available. But as Chuck said, one development just did five thousand square feet. I've heard this planning commission missed the critical point that one of the parts of the town plan should be telling governance to get their butt in gear. They've got access to long-term, uh, municipal funds. They have the rights of way over the roads to build infrastructure. So if we have an area that's suffering from well strife, if we have an area suffering from pollution in their wells, it's the town's responsibility to say to its economic development group or to its, uh, safety group or whatever group you want to call it, figure out a way to fix this. Because the individual landowners or the individual developers, Eric, as you're trying to take a pocket development and create interconnectivity, they can't connect over somebody else's property. You've got to create a mandate from the top that there will be easements. And personally, I've experienced, because you haven't protected the landowners who create private trails, you've actually less likely to get an easement from anybody in this, in, in Jericho, Vermont, because people used the easements that were made available as a weapon, as an interested person to interfere with modest developments on the property by the landowner that was specifically prohibited and it ended up in a permit approval that was an unacceptable condition. So if we don't say to people who use trails, thank the people who made this available to you and God bless them, but most importantly, leave them alone and treat them with respect. I have friends who've been effed and interfered with as they're cutting wood on their own property by the people speeding along on their mountain bikes. If we don't have rules of the road on our multimodal paths, encourage people to donate easements, but to do it in a protected, rule limited basis that says this is a privilege, it's not a right. You are not entitled to legal authority to dictate from your use of that trail over the property rights of the person who was so generous to have allowed you to use it. That should be in the town plan.
Yeah, I let you go longer than anyone else, so I'll give you another minute. Do you want to just wrap up?
Think center of Jericho because everybody talks about the commercial. That is in fact the physical center of Jericho, the distributed parts. And I'll hit you with one of my high points. From the time you enter Jericho until the time you leave, twenty-five miles an hour, no brake brakes, uh, speed control by design. Sidewalks, nice sharp granite curbs, um, those nice whirly gates. But if we don't slow the people down, people are not, whoops, trails is gone. People are not gonna be comfortable riding bikes, they're not gonna walk their children there. It's nasty, it's dusty, it's dirty, and there's no reason for us not to put a streetscape from one end of Jericho to the other with a design objective of twenty-five miles an hour. The difference between twenty-five and fifty over the three miles is minutes. And who has the rights? The people who live here or the people who are traveling through? I could keep going for a long time.
Sure, but thank you. That's a good, that's a good place to finish.
Can I just point out that Tom had a comment related to that? I don't know if you noticed that, but it would be better if he said it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Tom, would you share your comment that you shared in the chat so that we, everyone can hear it? And we can have it on in our minutes? It sounded, you had a comment, you were, uh, it sounded like you were agreeing with something that Jim had said or wanted to clarify.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Personally, I agree with most of what Jim had to say. Uh, but, but in reference to the comment that I put in the chat, uh, one of the areas of growth that has been uh, alluded to in the draft is Area Four, the infill between the village centers. And S J has already alluded to the importance of letting the science and the accurate, uh, natural resource mapping dictate where new housing stock, uh, might be developed. But if the water that falls on a land is not through regulation and through the goodwill of developers retained on the property, then the kinds of debacles that we saw in these heavy rains are gonna plague Jericho and Jim was right. Jericho avoided most of the problems that other towns experienced because it didn't rain as hard here as in other places. And if we were to get some of the types of weather events that uh, are becoming more frequent right here in town, uh, we would suffer those consequences. So keeping water uh, where it falls is a crucial element of being able to develop denser housing outside of the village centers. Thank you.
Okay.
Could you put a citation out?
You can't talk, the, I was on a meeting, one second. I was on a meeting with, for Zoom and when people were there chat, talking. Invite you, if you had more, if you wanted to comment about, just not randomly in the microphone, but did you want to say something more about what we just heard? I think what you produced was helpful.
I think he's just happy that Tom is.
Okay, okay, great. Yes.
I wanted to.
That was all I was trying to say.
Got it. I want to emphasize what Tom was saying, no net runoff is, uh, it would be, needs to be a goal from, from velvet. I don't think you can make it a law, but that's how we're gonna stay safe.
Okay. And Jim, did you want to add anything or you're done?
Well, there's one comment connecting Tom and Bill. I've built better wetlands the nature created. They're one of the easiest things to create. I should be able to enhance the function of existing wetlands. Most of the wetlands we have is because of poor development by government. The roads block the natural runoff, they create the floods, putting it through culverts and stuff, and if you watch all the way around. So we should be encouraging people to build and enhance the function of wetlands. And since we're already flooding everywhere, it's not protecting the wet, the, the floodplains. You've got to go in and excavate them to materially increase the capacity that they have to catch the air water that's already coming at them. And if you do that, you can mitigate the adverse effects of the storm, stop killing the lake and the rivers, but it's gonna create, somebody needs to do it. The guy who took care after Irene did a really good job. He did stuff in six months that would have taken eleven years to permit Vermont.
Okay. All right, this has been really productive. Uh, I feel really privileged to be working with this group of people. Did you want to offer a comment?
No, just waiting.
Okay, um, I do feel really privileged to work with so many great volunteers in the town. Um, maybe we should wrap up the discussion with understanding what our next steps are. David, with you and what you heard tonight and what the planning mission will be next from you and how we can help you between now and then.
How much time do you have? Yes, thank you.
Seven minutes.
This is, this has been very helpful and I appreciate that many of the, uh, folks tonight, you know, saw the, the, the initial draft that, uh, that you all got a couple of weeks ago and, and a lot of work has already gone into making changes to that based on, uh, the comments that you offered. And stuff that I just already had in my head that I knew needed to be, uh, fixed and changed and moved around and reduced and that. So, um, as well as not seeing the fact that there's this whole volume to do that is that is enormous and has all of the details from the current town plan uh, embedded in it, the data updated, and then looking to try to carry forward at least, uh, the, uh, intent behind some of those, um, sort of action items without having this incredible long, longer list, um, that'll go in the first volume. So, um, I am, um, scrambling right now to complete that work and I'll incorporate as much of this uh, as I can over the next day or two, um, in order to uh, have a revised draft of volume one as well as a complete draft of volume two to you by the end of next week. Um, that's, that's the goal, would be intention that, um, you will then start the process that draft will go to the usual planning commission for their review and, uh, scheduling public hearings um, to give everybody a chance to kind of see if it is what we heard, if it's, uh, this is how it can change.
Okay. And then we have public hearing in September and still some iterations based like the trail committee they're gonna need next Monday, so you probably, I don't know if you'll be able to address their feedback. S J has some feedback, more detailed feedback coming next week. So if that wasn't hit your draft for the fifteenth meeting, it would be iterative after that.
It'll be, so then the next iteration after that will be the result as the result of the planning commission's public hearing in middle, late September. So after that public hearing and getting all of your comments and everybody else's, we'll then create another draft. That'll be kind of the third version, uh, before it goes, uh, to the slot board as you recommend.
Okay.
So. This is Wendy, can I interject something? I'm sorry, because this was, this is one of the conversation about uh, making sure that, um, David has feedback because the, um, the D E I committee has not met in August, they're not meeting till the twenty-third. And I, I, I think it would be important to ask that group to get, give some feedback, especially around just, you know, just general, having another set of eyes to go through it with that lens. So I think I heard you say that they would be commenting on the second draft?
Correct. That, I, I would encourage folks, uh, who aren't already in the throes of preparing comments on this current draft uh, and haven't really reviewed it, uh, to wait for the next draft to come out and then base your comments on that. That way you're not trying to do this twice or more.
That makes sense. And, and did I hear correctly that that draft will be available after August fifteenth?
It should be by the end of next week.
Yeah, so we're, we're hoping it would be, you'd be able to just discuss it at our meeting on the fifteenth.
Right.
So we probably distribute it to the planning commission that weekend before.
Yeah.
Which is a heroic effort on David and Steve's part to create an interim iteration basically for.
That's a plan.
Linda.
What, by what date, David, do you need all of the feedback to incorporate into the draft that you're going to deliver at the end of next week?
Um, I will need it tomorrow. You, you and I.
Okay.
Meeting, I'm gonna need it tomorrow. And I have, I then have to turn it around and get it to Liv and Steve on Thursday.
So do we have S J's slides?
Yes.
Okay.
She does something.
And then S J's more detailed comments would be then in that next draft, not this, okay? Process. Jim?
I'd like to see David's work in an editable fashion so you can enter comments directly into his version of the town plan. Um, I tried to do it. I sought help and I was not able to do it. It does not.
It does not appear as though we can put the most powerful way and I think the easiest way uh, to give you feedback is to give you direct annotation in your work at the specific spot where I think there's an opportunity to enhance your work. And then you can choose the positive way or not. But there's no reason why we from this day and age, the political Republicans should not be able to enter public comments into a public document. I have two people other than myself who are experts and they could not do it.
It, it's a Adobe PDF and you can comment, make edits and comments and such um, through Adobe.
David? I, I have Adobe PDF and I use it all the time. That was a locked account. Need its password to open it up.
Oh, it was? Okay. I can fix it. That's something I can fix.
That's an easy fix.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Okay. Ready to move on? Actually, I guess we moved on to number six as in, in there.
Susan, this is Wendy again. I'm sorry to interrupt. But I had to, I had to leave early and I think that this might be the time in the meeting where I, I need to sign off.
Yes, that would be, I think, a good segue.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nice, thank you all for, um, for writing feedback from the various committees. And good to see everyone again. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda then is the planner's report.
Oh, yes. I only have a couple of quick updates. Um, David covered some of them, so I was gonna talk about editing the town plan, so I won't rehash any of that. Um, I wanted to share with you all that I will not be here at our next meeting, August fifteenth, so that you are aware of that. Um, update on the wastewater feasibility study, we're making some progress. It's so further behind schedule than I, than, that we all would want it to be. Um, engineers currently working on developing alternative options for each village and identifying potential disposal sites. Um, so that's where we're at in the process. The needs assessment has been kind of done and now we're into i- identifying alternatives. And in the next few months, there will be some public meetings where the engineers will present the alternatives. So I don't have any dates for those yet, but I just kind of want to get that out on your radar, like this is coming. It will be in the next few months and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to start scheduling those. And there will be three meetings, one for each village center, is my understanding of how that will look.
Is there any way to accelerate that so we have that completed before we do the final parts of the town plan? Just kind of integral of what we are stating in our plans for where we want growth to happen and come about.
Yeah, I have tried pushing the engineer as hard as I can on the dates and I've even given him like, this is when we need to have, you know, our town plan finalized and they are doing their best, but.
Are there any penalty clauses built into the contract?
I don't know that there are. No.
Maybe threatened.
Okay.
We, we as, as planning committees, we've all agreed that wastewater is probably priority.
Yes, absolutely.
A and.
I totally get it. Um, have you worked with consultants?
Well, I'm usually on the consulting side, so I'm getting the clients pushing me.
Okay. So you, you have a little bit of perspective on that and how. Yeah, so I.
One is they know.
They do know.
There, as far as that we know, they think they're gonna get it done in time.
That is what they continue to tell me.
So they do think that they'll be able to get it done in time?
I think they believe that to be true.
But even if it's not done done, it'll be seventy percent done or, you know, we might, we might have a good amount. There's already a pretty good amount of material. So we probably know, like, we'll know the needs, we'll know the, what some of the alternatives are for each of the village centers. And we might have all of those meetings, but might not have like final decisions made. But maybe the town plan can reference and then have a date certain final decisions made, kind of like we did in the resolution.
It's okay with you, get eighty percent of it, that says we know there's a need for this size wastewater creeper plant in the center and the corners and all that. It's like, cool.
Yes, we are adding to that point of that being known. Yes, yes. So that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but understand that the town plan is not gonna reiterate everything that's in that study. If the town plan does prioritize, that work needs to be done, it needs to be a priority. Implementing the recommendations, the results of that need to be, you know, the town's highest priority. So, you know, when it happens, when it gets done, the town plan is saying it's just gonna keep moving.
We are looking in this town plan though for putting in dates. We saw that in S J's piece that we want to have the wastewater treatment up and running within twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And, and that, if it turns out that we don't get the wastewater treatment report until twenty twenty-four, the goals become less realistic.
Right. You, you can't include that specific date, but it's still, it's still in there as your highest priority. So.
It's in the highest priority in town for years, nothing's happened. Well, you have, you will have a feasibility study to then go.
Yeah. And I am meeting with them on a weekly basis now, so that's been helpful. And um, John and Susan has attended when she can, and that's been helpful, I think, to make sure that progress is happening and having check-ins. And so that our project is not falling off their radar like we are in regular communication. So.
Squeaky wheel.
Yes. Um, and then another update real quick on the um, the uh, preferred alternatives meeting for the Jericho Corners to Riverside Bike Path. I know some of you attended that. There was not any decision made on which alternative was preferred. Um, I need to have, John and I need to have a follow-up meeting with the engineer to discuss some of the feedback that was heard at that meeting. Um, and so there will likely be another select board meeting where we'll invite the engineers to kind of update um, the plans based on what they heard at the most recent meeting, but I don't have a date for that. So that's not gonna fall off my radar. Um, it's, it's gonna happen, but it's probably not gonna be until I would think September.
And are you still thinking that you want those alternatives to be reviewed by the planning commission also to, cause John asked if you would provide feedback?
I would like that to be on an agenda for us.
Okay, so we can do on the fifteenth.
No, but I was actually looking at our um, plans and we probably could fit it in on September fifth, I think. But we, we have, want to talk about that, but I think that's a possible.
And is that in time enough before the select board wanting to take action?
Yeah.
Okay. Did anybody else attend that meeting?
I didn't attend the meeting. I watched it live.
Oh, yeah, right. And you were on it too.
I'm looking forward to you handing in my consent statement regarding that topic.
Excellent.
Just a minute.
Perfect. So stay tuned for that. I'll, I will keep you all posted. Um, and those are the only updates that I have.
Okay. Uh, other business, I understood that Sarah, you wanted to share something about the DRB.
Yeah, I went to a DRB meeting this, or last week, not next year, so in the future. Um, so there were five specific things that really stood out to me that I felt were related to overall topics and themes, not specifically to this DRB hearing, whether the project that was for. Um, so Phil Nubek asked, why are there minimum home sizes allowed? So part of this development for I think nine minutes uh, required that the homes be no smaller than two thousand square feet. And that is a superior example of exclusionary zoning. The fact that we allow any developer to come in and require a minimum house size. So my question is how do we remove that possibility within our zoning or do we just need another, you know, fourteen dot two dot six dot three that says there shall be no minimum house size allowed?
Well, and then same issue with, or almost the same issue with that other development bu- above, above Metro Side Park where they said wasn't a minimum size, but it had to be single family. And I, we've asked David, we asked the regional planning commission, and I think we were gonna ask the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and the attorney, if you have a homeowners association, how is it that they are allowed to create rules?
To write their own exclusionary zoning.
Right. So the answer so far has been they can. And the answer so far has been as long as their rules are not less restrictive, but their rules can be more restrictive. But I don't think we should accept that as the answer. I think we ha- and so I think we were going to, uh, Wendy, remind me what the last step on this was, was to like escalate it and say like, this isn't right. Maybe the state needs to, because the state has the law that says if you allow a single family, you have to allow duplex. Well, the town can do that, but it's, it's, it's a moot point if the homeowners association can come along and say, yeah, not so much.
Exactly.
Right.
I think that's in most of the older homeowners associations cannot have.
It's in all of the new ones.
It's in the older ones too.
It's in the older ones.
Right.
It's like lawyer played homeowners association expo.
Right, yes. So did we stop on the issue? Did we, we got like a no, there's nothing you can do?
Well, I got.
Still in progress.
The response I got from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns attorney was that yes, homeowners associations can make their own rules about that. And then that's where it ended. So.
Go to the state house.
Let me just, I know this is the part of the horse, but if the homeowners association is allowed to make a rule prohibiting it, great. We just don't allow the homeowners association to develop if that's the rule they wrote before, before we accept that development in.
Did we see the homeowners association agreement before?
Yeah.
Legal, they have to have their legal documents. Sometimes it's a condition though of approval where, so we would have to make it that it, that it couldn't be a condition that then just gets filed after the fact.
Right.
Like that it's satisfactory.
Right.
It would, we would have to make it a little bit more specific, but I don't know if we can do that.
Well, that's my question, is like, stop putting the, you, well, sorry, if it's written in there, then as long as it's not more, as long as it's less not restrictive.
So are we, this, so David, you know the answer to this, are we obligated to approve a development whose homeowners association documents contains terms that are counter to our regulations and counter to our goals?
So if they violate your regulations, that they require something that your regulations prohibit, then you can invalidate those particular provisions. But if your regulations are silent on a minimum house size, you don't have a tool to, you know, there's nothing in your regulations that says that that's not okay. So they can be more restrictive.
But we can't, can be right into the zoning that uh, any new inception cannot include a house size with minimum house size requirement.
You could, you could include, you know, you, just like you can include in your regulations, you know, maximum building sizes and minimum building sizes. You know, you can, you can incorporate that kind of language into your regulations in order to defeat that. You can go to the state house and, and lobby for uh, legislation changes to this, to statute that would invalidate those things that.
Right, pre-existing ADUs. I don't know if we need to go that far.
Or that they're, you know, they, they are exclusionary in, in defeating the overall kind of housing objectives of the state, you know? So there's that root, but ultimately you, you have to, in your regulation, you have to say something.
The, the, you recently passed X seven one, I think it was, it said every, every household can have an accessory dwelling unit put into it, supersede any homeowners associations that were, that predate that?
I believe that, I also tell, yeah.
Okay. So that would continue to be in effect in a new homeowners association as well, but you can still have an accessory dwelling unit in, even if the homeowners association says you can't. I'm not a lawyer.
Well, you're not requiring.
Right.
You, the, the legislation says that you have to allow for it.
Right.
Mm-hmm. You know, unless your regulations say that, you know, that they're required or there's some provision that makes it some sort of requirement. You know, but again, they're being more restrictive.
Actually, I don't know, do we, once I mean, want to talk about a homeowners association though, or just, just talk about the town?
Talk about the town.
Towns.
Towns only zoning. So if a homeowners association prohibits an ADU.
Right.
That's still basic.
Okay, so this requires obviously a lot more research and you would put it on my agenda to discuss an issue.
But, but as, as a piece of what we're working on right now, the town plan, I agree with what Sarah's saying, what we're all saying, which is we should have in our town plan that you may not build an HOA that excludes accessory units or hasn't been.
I think that would change the zoning. What the town plan has to do is direct us to update the zoning to avoid pro-exclusionary practice in homeowners association sort of at the higher level. And then we follow up and work on how to do it.
Yeah, and, and specifically call out ADUs and minimum lots, minimum housing size.
And single family only.
Can we, can we in that also address um, the issue of septic? Like I think Sarah's brought this up before, where you wanna, in a new development where an ADU maybe isn't in the plan right now, but is permitted, it might come twelve years down the road. If your septic isn't built at the start to accommodate such an expansion, right? Then you're out of luck. Like I couldn't do that because the septic in my house is not big enough to allow an ADU to be there, even if I wanted to do that.
Right. You would have to retrofit.
Right. Right. So how do we, yeah, encourage developers to.
Well, I think that's what, I think.
Make it a little bit bigger, a, a, a couple. Supersize it a little bit for the future.
Hundred twenty-five percent.
Just to say.
It would add the cost to everything that we do.
It would add a cost, but that would somehow, it would.
So maybe we could like waive their application.
So this is great. This gets me to another, one of my five observations, but not meaning. And I think also it could go back to what S J said, which is designing to the capacity of the land, not what someone's vision is or how many, how many lots you can fit. And Chuck Lacy said the same thing. You don't need a hundred acres to build ten houses. So designing to the wastewater capacity instead of the lot sizes or the aesthetic or all the other things. I think that's a really important place that we all need to step into as opposed to our traditional view of zoning and development.
Density.
And density.
Right.
Because the project that was proposed, that was discussed was nine acre, nine lots on a hundred acres. And not because that would be aesthetic or the vision specifically, but because that was, it did contain a watershed and wetland. And that was what that, that was the septic capacity more or less that could be supportive.
Mm-hmm.
So I feel okay about that part of it, at least. Something. I left me with a little something. Um, okay. The question was asked, was there a fire department recommendation for this development? And the answer was, yes, the fire department recommended um, more, had more strict recommendations, but they did not coincide with the town specs and the public work specs. So the developer followed the public work specs.
Ah, fire departments have been coming to us for quite a while, talking about.
So I know that's one of our goals.
Like driveway, driveway.
Public work specs.
Be specific.
It had to do with a portion of the private road that it would put in.
The grade?
No, not the grade, the width specifically. But again, the developer said, well, basically I was given two choices. I was given a recommendation, but that's gonna cost the developer more. So we went with the cheaper one, which still meets your minimum requirement. What's the big deal? Right? Um.
Supposedly do a line.
Yeah, and, and that seems like pretty straightforward. I think that is one of our seventeen. Yeah, and and that seems like pretty straightforward, and I think that is one of our seventeen. Goals?
Yeah.
I did not memorize them.
Update the town.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, third one. Uh, someone in the peanut gallery made the comment that this had only been requested for nine lots. Because over a certain amount of lots triggers further act two fifty review, I really don't know if that's true. But this goes back to the carrot and the stick conversation. If a developer comes forward and says, here's my plan for nine houses, because they're trying to avoid further costs. By developing more lots, that goes in direct opposition to what we're all trying to accomplish. So again, how do we subsidize, incentivize? More dense development on a hundred acre parcel where it can be sustained with wastewater and other, other resources. If the developer is not incentivized to do so because that costs way more money and permitting for them. And they have to build more stormwater containment and 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 the list continues. That's a real concern. I think I've said, I know I've said it before, but I don't know if everyone, if it sunk in. Really, these builders are not making so, so many dollars. They are making a profit on houses over seven hundred thousand dollars. They are incrementally making much less money under that mark. And to build a four hundred thousand dollar house, I can pretty much guarantee they are losing money. So how do we make up the difference in cost? Just on the development side, before it gets to the DRB or offer a way to bridge, because. We can talk about it all day long, about where we want these to happen and how we want them to happen, which means we look more dense residential. But it literally affects the bottom line of what they even apply for a permit for. Or have their engineer work on. Costs more money, how many test pits they dig. What that septic plan looks like if it's for five bedrooms instead of three, supersizing it at a hundred and fifty percent of capacity. So that's. They have zero incentive to look at it through that lens.
I'm gonna tooth that horn, community wastewater.
Yes, but community wastewater, I'm not sure, after we see this community wastewater project. Result, which you just said is gonna be presented in the three village centers. How is that gonna address infill development in the middle of the triangle, which is where this is?
Mm-hmm.
They won't reach there.
It should reach there.
They should reach there, which also, not to get too far off track, because I do have two more points. The the trails comment saying, oh, if somebody's gonna build. That development on, I think it's called South World, or it's called now, above most of Riverside Park, they should put in a sidewalk. Then that just means they're million dollar houses instead of nine hundred thousand dollar houses. That's all that transcends still. I, I don't know how I'm sitting down. It, they're putting the, they're putting the cost on the people who then buy the houses. That's what that, that's where that goes.
Is just to say, please give us the right way.
Yeah.
You know.
Yes.
And then somebody else takes bears in front of it, but it's not, it's not law.
Out of order, bring me point five and then I'll go back to point four. The developer reached out to the trails committee for comment and received zero response. And then point five, point four, um, there was a comment from the conservation commission. Committee that the um, that we have no landscaping restriction in new developments for the developer to move only the. Which I thought was great, again.
We had it in the commercial district zoning.
We did.
But that got voted out.
Correct. But I don't see any reason why it can't go.
Can I just make my news?
We never.
We never proceeded with that round of change.
No, we have to have the public record correct. That all that, the that vote was many years ago, and I. Don't think there was anything about specifically about native landscaping. The more recent round of commercial district zoning changes, we never recommended.
Right.
We took off the table because we recognized that we didn't have enough support, mostly from the landowners. And that did, I don't even know if it required native or if it recommended native. Our current regulations recommend native, but doesn't require. So were they, are you saying that we should, that's potentially something.
That it should be required in all new proposed elements.
Can I just get on my soapbox on that and say, let's not encourage people to grow trees that are gonna get sixty to a hundred feet tall? Because we keep talking about the view corridor, we keep talking about the scenic capability. You put up a hundred, if you put up a maple, it's a beautiful tree, for the first twenty years, it's wonderful. After about thirty years, all you see is a tree. And if you wanna get your view of Mansfield, you wanna get your view of Campbell's Home, you can have trees. You can have fruit trees, you can have crab apple trees, you can have shrubs, you can have. All kinds of greenery that grows to about twenty feet, it doesn't block the view.
And it also shouldn't be single species.
Yeah.
All ash trees, hundred percent, every tree up top, ash, do it, it's cheaper. So all die at the same time.
Yep.
All right, does anybody else have any liaison updates or updates on things that they're doing? That they wanna share? Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you for letting me go.
No, that was the other business.
Very helpful.
Um, I did a walking audit on Monday, yesterday. With um, some representatives from um. Uh, Jerry Hill Senior Living Community. And I shared my notes with Susan and with Linda and also with Wayne Howe. Um. Uh, it was, it was very productive and. Uh, I thought it was time well spent and I would be happy to talk about it at more, in more depth at some other future time, but.
Maybe related to the Stan, maybe when we talk about Stan Tech proposal.
Some connections to that, that end piece of Raceway.
Yes.
That um, were, were pretty clearly would be a benefit to that community as well, so. Um, yep.
All right, ready to wrap up and plan for our next meeting? So our agenda for the fifteenth is we'll have no Linda.
I will also.
And no Chris, according to my notes.
Oh.
So. Well, we can't confirm Wendy. Heidi, are you able to attend, you think, our August fifteenth meeting? Yes. So Heidi, me, Eric.
I'll be there.
Sabina.
That's cool.
Um.
Okay. Then Wendy, possibly.
Possibly.
Okay.
Either way, we're four, we have a four.
Yeah, we're good. Keep moving. Okay, so we're going to, on the fifteenth, review the next draft.
Yes, and.
Action to warn.
Yep. Action to warn for the hearing, and we had talked about also dedicating some time to liaison updates, because we kept bumping it off of. Previous agenda. But you got yours in today, but if Sabina wants to use that time for her walking audit, or if anyone else wants to have more. Like dedicated space where.
Do we do the warning as 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 like a first item of business, or we we do it after we've talked about the draft? And we say, and what if, what if that changes to a draft that we might discuss at that meeting? Like what draft are we warning?
You'd be warning the draft that you're reviewing, that, you know, if it, if you feel it's at a point where. You're ready to start that process, you know, you're still gonna make comments to it, you're gonna make changes to it, but. It should be a draft that you're ready to kind of begin the process, send the usual planning commission and adjacent municipalities and such. Um, to keep the.
And can the draft change at all between August fifteenth and the date of the public hearing?
Um, it can, um. The question is, logistically, is that. Do you want to try to? Issue another draft in the middle of that? I would recommend against it.
Okay.
Again, it's the kind of thing where you put out a draft, you're soliciting comments, you collect those comments. And then you use that to prepare a subsequent draft when we're done, probably done with your public hearing.
So after our hearing, we can make more changes before we send it to.
Then you make changes and send this up.
Okay, got it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, so that's August fifteenth, and then what about September fifth?
Um.
Stan Tech.
We were, yep, potentially take, doing comments on the, on the bike path, yes. And the other item I had temporarily was talking about the. Riverside zoning, but I don't know where David's at with that.
No.
No, okay.
Well, I I've started on that, but.
Not ready.
Do you think though, would it be useful? To, like, I know the planning commission has never, if not, I mean, this planning commission, but the planning commission. Was not in charge of the zoning, had nothing to do with that zoning, it was all done by the select board with a consultant. Do you think it would be helpful for the planning commission to spend some time just kind of like digesting and understanding? Maybe looking at some of the feedback that you've received. As a prelude to new potential starting to work on it?
Yep, no, absolutely. You should, you should familiarize yourself with, with what that code. Uh, includes and says, as well as the comments you receive from uh, various consult.
And soliciting comments among ourselves, like we've never really de- discussed it and said, we like this, we don't like that, or. What's purpose is this, and this is. Yeah, in the specific that chapter, the character base, hold on.
Yeah.
Just chapter thirteen.
Yeah, yeah.
All those pictures and all stuff.
But it's so nice when it first came out, it was like, this just worked the great.
Yeah, okay.
Susan, can I jump in?
Yes, Heidi.
I'm sorry, thank you, just making sure, sort of the, we've never discussed piece. Um. I'm really tired, so I apologize that I'm not tracking as well. But I do wanna make sure that we have fully covered amongst us. The comment that was made about um. Letting the zoning. Historical patterns of zoning determine where we put housing and where we do infill. That just felt like such a big takeaway for me, and just hearing Sarah, what you were reporting from the DRB and. But that, that's like a huge. Potential shift in thinking, yes? I mean, I'm not sure, is it David? The way that that's being framed, because it feels a little bit in juxtaposition to the. Um, continuing on the historic patterns of development and compact mixed use development. I just wanna make sure that like, we're, we're attentive to. Either there's a tension there, or that we've named that we have heard this and we're incorporating it and or not. My brain is not really processing it, and I'm just not sure when and how we do that. But, but I just, that just for me was a big takeaway from um, tonight's listening. Um, from our external, non um, planning commission public. That we may or may not want to take um, a moment to fully understand and discuss. As it really could be a different reshaping of what we have. And again, it may be that I'm not processing to understand if it is, but I heard it as something that is divergent from the direction we were going.
So my take, I've not, I've not heard any specific direction. From the commission uh, or anyone else. Uh, that there is a desire to throw out. All past kind of planning and and regulation and and constructs of. Uh, existing patterns of development and start completely from scratch. That it's been my understanding that you're building upon an existing development pattern. Uh, a traditional development pattern, and the point that I hear from the affordable housing committee and others is that. You know, just because, you know, the village is where the village is. Doesn't mean you, you don't absolutely have to take into account the fact that. There's a large floodplain in some places, there are wetlands in some places, there are steep slopes in some places. It doesn't mean that you can develop this place willy nilly, you have to take those natural constraints, the natural features. Uh, into consideration, and you need to think about. Where else in town, where else adjacent to these existing settlements? Would new development also be able to go in order to meet your, your, your housing targets? So Heidi raises that, an important kind of fundamental question, you know. Are we throwing out the concept of, you know, development in and around the existing villages? Uh, for something completely new? Um, if that's the case, then. We're starting from scratch and we need to start this whole process entirely over. If that's not the case, then, okay, good to know.
And I think, I think David, what I'm hearing you say is that it's not an either or, it can be a yes and. Yes, we continue where it's been, and we also say. We are not ruling out development in other places. We need more housing than that central historical pattern can accommodate. We encourage growth also in other places with these sort of parameters. So I think that's what I heard you say, and. Um, that's feeling comfortable to me, so I just wanted to thank you for that help there.
And and that's why it's really important that you do, you know, it's not just about what can the land support, but it's also around. What do we want? What kinds of development, what scales of development do we want where in our community? If it's just what the land that can support, then, then you have. You know, multi-story, multifamily mixed-use buildings popping up in the middle of anywhere. That happen to have the septic capacity to support it. If that's not what you want, then you, you also put. Constraints on, on scale and uh, patterns of development uh, in certain places. In, and not in others, uh, in order to encourage that kind of development in this place rather than that place.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, so you really are building upon that historic settlement pattern. That's where you want to have more mixture of uses, that's where you wanna have more multifamily family housing, more diversity of building types and housing types and things like that. Concentrated where you can serve them uh, with infrastructure, not in the middle of West Bolton. Or on the edge of West Bolton where, you know, it might be a different concentration of development that you would want to support, but you're not. You're not, I've not heard anyone suggest that whether it's there or. Some other random place in in town that you wanna consider, we wanna create a whole new village. Because it's devoid of any, you know, natural constraints that we're aware of.
Yeah, right, I, I think it's uh. I take some of Chucks' comment, I put a grain of salt, because the village center a hundred and fifty years ago was very different. And the school was a third, the size of this room with ten kids and a teacher. And it was a one-room school, and I knew what that looks like, because I went to a one-room school. And so that, yeah, that, that notion, I don't feel in its own right, it's sustainable for many reasons. What I envision is someone coming forward with a plan that looks like Lafayette. And saying, let's do this, because this is, that, those are also multifamily homes with individual septics.
Mm-hmm.
On a quarter acre or less. Let's do that.
Yeah.
Right, and no one, no one is coming to our development review. With that or manufactured homes, no one is able to even consider proposing a trailer park or any other thing. On small lots.
Yeah.
So that's.
We also have to deal with the, the natural resources constraints, which we have wildlife corridors, many of which run through. Prime development land.
Yes.
And balancing those two is. Not an easy task, I mean, we, we heard it here today, we had some people saying, yes, build more.
Yep.
Protect this, protect the drainage, protect this, and and they're in the same spot.
If I could just steer us back to, so September fifth, Heidi, we were gonna talk about the character-based zoning, so. Not to. If all this, what we're just talking about now is Heidi, there's sort of the difference between the rules.
Yeah.
Which is the zoning and the locations, which is really the zoning district. Zoning districts, and the zoning districts drive the rules. And I think that we're open to whether or not those districts are, do we like our districts map? And David's already suggested a couple of times in the town plan that we look at boundaries. And maybe that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more based on this discussion, because I think it's there. Um, I think natural resource constr- Natural resource constraints were really. Paramount in the historic settlement pattern, I don't think they're two opposite things, I think if you did everything based on natural resources. And then you did everything based on a historic pattern, they're not gonna be wildly different. But like David said, there maybe because of technology, because of transportation, there's more areas now that could be developed than maybe could be. Hundred and fifty years ago, but floodplain then, floodplain now, there it's still basically in the same. When you look at the map, the roads are where the rivers are, the villages are where the the water is. The character-based zone is riverside with our rules about riverside that are in place right now. That to me is a short-term problem that needs a short-term fix like yesterday. And that's what we were suggesting, do we, because to change our zoning district map is like as big of a project as a town plan. So we can't do that tomorrow, but we can fix. Riverside tomorrow or as soon as we can get to it. And probably sort of nip around the edges and make some. Short-term changes with and then kind of once the town plan is in place and it sets up the strategy. Then we go back and say, do we need to adjust the map, do we need different boundaries, do we need to define our districts differently? That's a bigger, longer-term strategic question. So what I was suggesting is that for September fifth. Since none of us have never really deeply dove terrible grammar. Dived deeply into the character-based zone ever. That we at least go, here's what it is, why do people find it so difficult? Why did the consultant suggest it in the first place, what do we know about it that looks difficult? What what have, you know, what's our basic take on it? Kind of like a C B Z one O one. For this planning mission to just start the conversation, knowing that we're gonna try to do something fast-ish. And in the, that's an interim. Okay, that's how I see it, is that? Good with everybody?
Yep.
So that's what we would maybe broach that subject on September fifth.
Chapter thirteen.
Yeah, chapter thirteen, so your homework before September fifth will be to read chapter thirteen, so if you wanna get started on it now, our homework. Okay, can we wrap up that topic?
Yep.
Okay, do we need an executive second? Uh, David, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and really pleased to hear so many very positive comments of. Really great. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Sabina makes the motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
Eric. All is in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Picking it out and Tom too, are we left?